That's what we were looking for. Okay.
Jim Batson. Kara Benjamin. Don Parmichael. Kara Drumke. Lisa Hessel. Sonal Kolkarni. Casey Rooney.
Great. We note that Dr. Batson is had a planned absence. Everybody else is present. And we are going to kick off the public comment. We invite members of the public, um, sorry. We're going to start with the written public comment. I believe we have three comments that were submitted in accordance, uh, prior to the board meeting that Mary is going to read and then we'll proceed into the, for our guests that are in person.
There's actually four comments that I have for tonight. Okay. Um, the first one is from Alma Miranda. Dear District Board of Directors, as you begin to communicate your plans for the upcoming school year, I wanted to reach out to you and ask what your district plans are. Since it has been inequivocally proven that masks do not only fail to protect anyone against the COVID-19 virus, but when parents have the masks tested at a lab, they were found to contain 11 dangerous pathogens, including, and there's several medical terms for these things that they found. I'm going to read the common term for them. Pneumonia, tuberculosis, meningitis sepsis, excuse me, sepsis, keratitis and granulomatis amidic encephalitis, pneumonia, bloodstream infections, meningitis, UTIs that are resistant to antibiotics, food poisoning, causes of Lyme disease, diphtheria, Legionnaires' disease, severe infection, high morbidity rates, and meningitis sepsis. Half of the masks were contaminated with one or more strains of pneumonia-causing bacteria. One-third were contaminated with one or more strains of meningitis-causing bacteria. One-third were contaminated with dangerous antibiotic-resistant bacterial pathogens. In addition, less dangerous pathogens were identified, including pathogens that can cause fever, ulcers, acne, yeast infection, step throat, periodontal disease, Rocky Mountain spotted fever, and more. A longitudinal study from March 2020 to March 2021, published in MedRixon concluded with the following warnings. Prolonged use of wearing masks more than four hours a day promotes facial alkalization and inadvertently encourages dehydration, which can cause, which, I'm sorry, which can enhance barrier breakdown and bacterial infection risk. Masks increase headaches and sweating and decrease cognitive precision. By obscuring nonverbal communication, masks interfere with social learning in children. Masks can distort verbal speech and remove visual cues to the detriment of individuals with hearing loss. Clear face shields improve visual integration, but there is some corresponding loss of sound quality. Can you please show us how the scientific proof that shows that masks are are useful in preventing the spread of COVID-19 virus? Any easy search will provide you with a vast amount of data against the effectiveness of wearing masks. When will the district follow actual science and stop mandating masks on our kids? Why are you choosing to ignore actual science that states that masks do not work? We, the taxpayers of the district, ask you to follow actual science and open our schools this fall mask-free. Stop making our kids actually sick by keeping them, keeping masks on them. There is currently no state law enacted by the Illinois Legislature or any administrative rule enacted that requires any individual, including students, to wear a medical device otherwise generally known as a face mask in order to prevent any illness, including but not limited to any contagious or infectious disease, virus, et cetera. If your response is that you were following the ISBE authority, then my response is the Illinois State Board of Education, school superintendents, school boards, teachers, or any other Illinois educational personnel are not medical or healthcare professionals licensed in the state of Illinois to perform medical diagnoses or prescribe medicines, remedies, et cetera, and therefore have no lawful or legal authority to require any individual or student in a school, a school classroom, or any school property to wear a medical device otherwise generally known as a mask in order to prevent any illness, including but not limited to any contagious or infectious disease, virus, et cetera pursuant to 105 ILCS 5/2, Illinois State Board of Education Power of Duties. If your response is that you are following IDPH authority, then my response is the Illinois Department of Public Health, IDPH, does not have lawful or legal authority to mandate, require, or force any individual to wear a medical device otherwise generally known as a face mask in order to prevent any illness, including but not limited to any contagious or infectious disease, virus, et cetera, and to do so is unlawful and acting outside their statutory authority pursuant to 20 ILCS 2310-15. Further, any and all IDPH guidance, suggestions, orders, or directions provided or given to Illinois schools, the Illinois State Board of Education, or Illinois school officials, boards, or superintendents regarding school health care policy, measures, or safety precautions, school attendance procedures, or face masks, or facial covering requirements is 100% unequivocally without question or contemplation unlawful and illegal. In 1897, in Potts versus Breen, the Illinois Supreme Court ruled that while school directors and board of directors are invested with power to establish, provide for, govern, and regulate public schools, they are in these respects subject to the direction or control of the State Board of Health. If your response is that you are following CDC authority, then my response is the CDC is an advisory agency to the executive branch of the United States government. It is an advisory agency only and possesses no rule making authority federally or within 50 states of the United States of America and has no authority to lawfully or legally mandate or require any individual, including students, to wear a medical device otherwise generally known as a face mask in order to prevent any illness, including but not limited to any contagious or infectious disease, virus, et cetera. If your response is that the governor has orders in place that must be followed, then my response is that on July 2nd, 2020, a Clay County, Illinois court ruled on a class action case, Bailey versus Pritzker, that the Illinois governor had no constitutional nor legal authority to issue any executive order after April 2020. Pursuant to the IEMAA, and as such, any executive orders issued were unconstitutional and void ab initio. This Illinois court order continues to be valid and is currently applicable. In closing, I wanted to be known to this school board that there is no reason to wait on the guidance from ISBE, IDPH, or the CDC to finalize the planning of the school year because they are only advising and driven by political motives, not what is best for our kids. We are a local district that can follow the science and open mask-free. If your intentions are to create a medical apartheid based on vaccination status, I want to remind you that this is discriminatory and against 745 ILCS 70-1, Sections 2, 5, and 7, the Healthcare Right of Conscience Act. Have a wonderful summer. Sincerely, just another taxpayer, Alma Miranda. The second letter is from Libertyville Mayor Donna Johnson. I wanted to take this opportunity to publicly thank Dr. Prentice Lee for his dedication, years of service, collaboration, and partnership with the village, and his strategic thinking as the superintendent of District 128. It is because of his leadership, coupled with his staff, that we have achieved an academic standard of excellence that is nationally recognized. Prentice, it is not just the professional qualifications that you brought to this role, but the depth of character, vision, and insight. I wish you the best in retirement and hope you will shine your light of experience in mentoring the next generation. I wish you and your family continued health. Sincerely, Mayor Donna Johnson. Our third letter is from Liz Bruckner. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. In regards to masks in the fall, I would hope the board would agree to make masks optional and allow parents to make medical decisions in regards to their children's health. I understand there are several boards throughout the state that have come to the conclusion of optional masks, and I would hope D128 will as well. Children have suffered disproportionate amount of harm from the pandemic, as the effects for many will be felt throughout their entire lives. There's the educational, developmental, economic harm stemming from failed online learning. There's the social, emotional, and mental harm imposed by a year of isolation. There's the physical harm of less exercise, increased rates of substance abuse, and more. With all the protections adults now have, it's time for them to step up and give children as close to a return to normalcy as possible. Eliminating masks will be a huge step in that direction. And she provides a, um, a link to an article that's in wirepoints.org. Thank you, Liz Bruckner. And the final comment is from John Hawk. My name is John Hawk and I have two students in District 128 this coming year. I am extremely concerned with the prospect of my three sons being indoctrinated by a racist pedagogy that tells them that they are oppressors based solely on the color of their skin, a characteristic that they had no control over. I think our kids have had to deal with an unprecedented amount of mental and emotional stress during the last one and a half years. They need to find ways to get their lives back on a positive track, not to be exposed to ideas that create more angst. Education is supposed to be about teaching young people tools such as critical thinking, analysis, research, and communication skills that will help them become successful and productive members of society. Students should not be told that physical characteristics of a person are more important than a person's character. I am dumbfounded that there are educators in District 128 that would actually support a divisive ideology that is rooted in Marxism. Critical race theory has no place in our schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you to everybody who submitted public comment. At this time, excuse me, we will invite members of the public that wish to address us to go to the podium. Please say your name and you will be limited to roughly three minutes.
Laura Wright. Laura? Hey, you're here to speak tonight, right? Okay, good. We want to make sure we get to you all right.
Okay, so I know what you're all thinking. It's Monday night and I couldn't find anything to do tonight.
Sir, could you please state your name?
Pat Grudy from Vernon Hills, Laurel Valley Drive, Vernon Hills. But actually, the truth is, um, the reality is, I couldn't find anything better to do than to be here. Um, I really just wanted to be here and convey my thanks to Prentice, who was my partner for better part of 16 years. And, um, honestly, Prentice, you know, I've told you this before, but I need to tell you one more time. I couldn't have had a better partner than you on the last 16-year journey. Um, and I was going to just do this kind of from the heart, but it got kind of, well, it's not lengthy, so don't panic. But, you know, what I want to know, what I want you to know is throughout your entire time here, you've just displayed incredibly courageous leadership. And I think one of the things that I always valued, no matter what situation we faced, no matter how difficult it was, um, I knew without question that I could rely on you to deal with it promptly, to deal with it professionally, and to deal with it fairly. Um, and we certainly had a number of cases, especially during the last year, where those leadership skills of yours were so important. And you always mastered the balance between the multiple stakeholders, between our students, between our staff, between our community members and taxpayers. Um, and we know that's especially challenging to do, um, but you never lost your focus really on what really matters here. And that's the students of all abilities, all backgrounds, and all interests. And you made sure we invested what we needed to in order to sustain and grow the great programs we have here. Um, you know, after all, they are really the hallmark of what makes D128 so special. And at the same time, you never lost sight of the taxpayers' interest, making sure we were good stewards with the taxpayers' resources. You continued the excellence in academic achievement as evidenced by our continued improvement in standardized test scores, as well as simultaneously increasing the number of students we had in some of our most programs. Okay? And as we've talked many times, those things are kind of diametrically opposed. And I think there are really few schools that have been able to achieve that. You recruited and developed some of the best teachers, some of the best administrators, and some of the best support staff, I think, anywhere in high school education. You provided guidance and advice and support for all of us on the Board of Education throughout your tenure here at D128. You know, and finally, this is why I needed a list. Um, even though VHS and LHS were really, I think, in great shape when you arrived, um, almost 16 years ago, uh, there is no doubt that you leave the district in the next couple of days in far better shape than it was when you arrived. Um, and so in addition to all those programs that I kind of referenced, I mean, in fact, if you look around, at LHS, we built the swimming pool, auditorium renovations, a multipurpose athletic facility, a dance studio, we renovated the wrestling and weight room facilities. We upgraded multiple athletic fields, including the brainward sports field. We resurfaced the tennis courts. We did multiple property purchases across the street on Route 176. We made significant upgrades to HVAC control systems and boilers. We invested millions of dollars into security enhancements. And then in Vernon Hills, we've added new locker rooms, addressed space needs associated with the growing population, including a new gym, eight classrooms, a state-of-the-art STEM lab, a cafeteria expansion, and added a dance studio, upgraded those athletic fields, including the football stadium, girls and boys softball fields. And then also here, we also completed, um, literally millions of dollars worth of security enhancements to make sure our students and staff are protected. So the best part about all those projects were completed without a referendum. All those projects were completed without borrowing a single dime. And all those projects were completed, and yet we still were able to abate to the taxpayers more than $15 million. So to me, that's the whole package. Um, and I really think there are a few people that could have responded to those challenges in the way you did. And so again, I just want to say thank you for your dedicated years of service. Um, I wish you the very best in retirement. Um, I do hope you can unplug, relax, and spend some time with your wife and family. Um, and if you need any advice on that, I'm here to help you. Thanks for all of your hard work.
Thank you so much, Pat.
Not only do we appreciate your kind and warm comments and your presence back at a board meeting, but you were almost exactly three minutes. You really, well done. Okay, who'd like to go next?
Good evening. My name is Jane Zane. I want to first express gratitude for the board and everyone else who works to make District 128 successful. I would like to briefly share my deep connection to this community and the reason for speaking out tonight. I've grown up in Vernon Hills, am a graduate of VHS, and am an educator in a local school district. I truly care about what goes on in our community, which is why I feel the need to share my thoughts tonight. While there is plenty more I wish I could share, I want to be respectful of everyone's time, so I will summarize the best I can. Many of the questions I will pose are ones I hope we will reflect on. Additionally, my hope is that no matter where you receive information, please do your own research, ask the hard questions, and never simply blindly trust in anyone, including myself. In my classroom, during our statistics units, I had my students think deeply about the value of data in the real world. Together, my students and I ended up calculating the survival rates to help answer the question, how severe is COVID? Survival rate was defined as the number of people who got COVID and survived out of the total number of people who got COVID. For tonight's purposes, I will highlight the age group of key importance. For the age group of ages zero to 17, their survival rate is 99.986%. However, there are two other things to consider. Their survival rate is based on the assumption that you get COVID, since the denominator is the number of COVID cases versus everyone in the population. Secondly, it also does not factor in whether you are a healthy individual or not. In fact, per the CDC, 95% of all COVID deaths had other comorbidities or conditions listed on their death certificates. Given what we know about how severe COVID is, does it make sense to require every single person to wear a mask? In our court system, people are innocent until proven guilty. Does it not seem backwards that now people are treated as sick until proven healthy? Also, what does evidence say about masks? The highest quality studies, the meta-analyses, systematic reviews, and randomized control trials conclude that there is no statistically significant difference between wearing a mask or not in preventing the spread of respiratory illnesses such as influenza or coronavirus. Why is this evidence being ignored? So why the mask requirement? If the reason is because we're a public entity and that is what we are told to do, is there not an ethical responsibility to make sure that we have critically thought about what they are recommending rather than blindly following? Finally, what about the vaccines that are currently emergency use authorized, where their endpoint is not to prevent people from getting COVID, but to prevent more severe symptomatic COVID? Would you take an experimental shot made with carcinogenic ingredients with no long-term safety data that only reduces symptoms for a disease with over 99.5% survival rate for most, made by companies known for committing crimes, paying billions of dollars in fines whom you cannot sue because they assume no liability? The FDA claims these vaccines are safe. How many things in history were once deemed safe only to later not be? Smoking, DDT, glyphosate, et cetera. Smoking is a prime example of something that was not only declared safe but glorified in the media for many, many years until they had to admit the truth. The tobacco and pharmaceutical industries are enormously profitable, whereas the people speaking out about these truths from the heart honestly have not much to gain compared to what is at stake for these companies.
I'm just going to remind you, you are at the three-minute mark, so if you could wrap up.
Yes, I'm almost done.
Okay, thank you.
How much energy and effort has been spent to educate people on how to make their bodies healthier and stronger to build their natural immune system versus how much energy and effort has been spent to promote the vaccine, to provide artificial immunity? Does it make sense to recommend the vaccine for the students given their risk from the virus and their unknown risks from the vaccine? Ethically, when there's a choice, there must be a choice for children. My intention is to help everyone become more aware and continue to make more carefully considered decisions. There are no simple answers to any of this, but I believe we must think most critically about the most complex questions. From my perspective, my ultimate goal hopefully lines with all of yours. How can we best serve our students, teachers, and members of our D128 community? I've included sources to what I have shared tonight in an email sent at 7:20. Again, thank you for your time and for all you do for our District 128 community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Good evening, Board. I'm happy to have y'all fed and hydrated. This is an unusually long evening, even for y'all. As a longtime District 128 parent, I still care deeply about the students in this community and those who serve their needs.
Do you mind stating your name?
I certainly do not. Anna Drain.
Thank you, Anna.
Um, I applaud the former District 128 board, and it's just a bonus to have Pat here tonight to get to hear this. Kudos, Pat. Uh, and the current board with continuing their hard work, and Prentice with how you have skillfully guided this district through unprecedented times. During a recent board meeting, you had a medical professional who it appears lives outside of District 128 present their personal agenda during, during, uh, public comments. While I understand that open meetings are, all are welcome to participate in public comments, I urge the board to use your discretion on comments from outsiders with agendas. There's enough friction within the community on the handling of COVID, uh, rather than, uh, considering those from outside of the community here adding fuel to the fire. Changing subjects, for all the snarky comments I may or may not have made about the length of district speeches at graduations, I have the mic now and I plan on making good use of it. The real purpose of my driving out tonight, Prentice, this is your last meeting. I come here tonight for the main purpose of saying a heartfelt thank you for all you've done for my sons, for District 128, for education in the state of Illinois under duress, for the tireless hours you have spent dealing with all manners of shenanigans while spearheading the outstanding education our community has received. Thank you, Prentice. Job well done.
Thank you, Anna.
Okay. It does appear that everybody wishing to speak, um, has done so. If there's anyone else that I'm missing, please, um, the podium is yours. If not, we have an excellent segue to the president's report, which tonight will be devoted to acknowledging the retirement of our friend and colleague, Dr. Prentice Lee, who has been at the helm as superintendent since 2008, has been an educator for 41 years. There's some people in this room that aren't 41 years old, and I'm not going to name names, but that's a long time. You have been a teacher, a dean, a coach, an assistant principal, a principal, an associate superintendent, and a superintendent. And I might be missing a few things.
No, I'm amazed I remembered all that. That's pretty impressive, actually.
Well, what's most impressive is the contribution that you have made to District 128. We will never be able to thank you enough for making this place your life's work. You have poured your blood, sweat, and tears. You have lived, breathed, ate, and slept for the benefit of District 128. Your impact cannot be measured. The benefit of your experience and your wisdom are only outshined by who you are as a person. You have been more than a superintendent and a colleague. You have been a mentor and a friend to so many. And there are tens of thousands of students whose lives have been impacted by your work. I hope you know how much we're going to miss you, how much respect and affection we feel for you, just as you have felt respect and affection for everyone that you have led. I'm going to open it up and let some of my board colleagues and any administrators that wish to acknowledge this very monumental evening as your last board meeting. Um, and then if you'd like to make any comments, you're more than welcome, but certainly there's no pressure to do so. I will mention that the retirement party, the retirement gift, the video montage, all of those things have been um, very warmly and graciously received by you. And we certainly do not wish to embarrass you, but, um, we could not let your last meeting pass without acknowledging uh, this monumental occasion. So with that being said, um, I'm just going to open up the floor. Anybody who wishes to make a comment, please feel free to do so. Certainly for our newer board members, there's no pressure to say anything. Certainly, um, some of us have only known you for a short time, but, um, whoever'd like to get us started, please go right ahead.
Like to, uh, since I'm one of the newest, I'll be one of the shortest. My experience with you is more as a parent. So, um, you have been the leader at the helm. While both my boys have been traversing this high school experience, and I thank you as a community member and a parent. I thank you for your leadership. And as a new board member, I appreciate the graciousness that you had welcoming us all onto the board and trying to make us feel like we were an important part of this process and capable, even when we were questioning our own capabilities. So, thank you. And enjoy your retirement, please. I think Anna and Pat said, captured what we all feel really well. I just know that the best leaders I've worked with over the years make the people around them better. You have made us better as a board. You have made our district better. You've made our students better, our processes, our communications with the state. Your, your reach goes farther than we have time to discuss. Uh, your, your reach goes farther than we have time to discuss. Um, but I, I just wanna, from my heart, say thank you for your advice, your communications over the time I've been on the Board, for what you've done for my own personal children and making this district the fantastic place that it is. You will be missed, and I hope that you enjoy every minute of your retirement.
I do have an email from Karen Lundstedt, who was not able to join us. Um, Karen was a longtime Board member and, um, says, "Prentice, it's hard to believe that your years leading D-128 are coming to a close. You have led our district with great wisdom and integrity, and you will be missed. Thank you for all you've done for the D-128 community, the students, the staff, and the Board of Education. We are all truly better because of our time spent with you as superintendent. Enjoy every moment of your retirement is greatly deserved. My very best wishes to you and your family. Warmly, Karen Lundstedt."
Nice. I retired a couple of years ago and, uh, it was difficult for me to hear the people saying, uh, nice things about me because they all use the past tense. And it was as though I were dying. It was like a funeral. People would cry, "We're gonna miss you." Uh, we are gonna miss you, and the tears are, are real. Um, but Prentice has a long life ahead and a brand-new toy that he's going to prepare a recital for us. He'll come back and he'll play something. You could send it as a video, submit it for public comment.
Play with me, yeah.
Outstanding, yes. Uh, you have, uh, had such an impact on everyone, so as a parent of two kids that went through the district, thank you. Uh, as a Board member, thank you for welcoming me. Um, at, you know, as a teacher, you're always writing, uh, recommendations for students, and they'll say, "What are the three words that pop into your mind?" And I'm like, "I can't do it." There, I can't get it down to three, so, uh, I, I decided that it was, uh, knowledgeable, leader, and caring. Put those three things together and you got, well, Prentice Lee. So, thank you so much, Doctor. It's been a pleasure to know you. Keep up the good work.
And if you would indulge us, we would love to take a photo with you.
Oh, yeah. Yes, of course.
Excellent. Okay, great.
I'd like to just say something.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. I didn't mean to wrap up prematurely. Please.
That's, that's okay. So, as a parent, I have to say thank you. My daughter's had an incredible experience, and she's living up to her dreams right now. So, thank you for setting that environment up. And I always believe culture starts at the top. And every experience we've had as a parent and even here as a Board member, you know, is, has been incredible. It, it's, it's very welcoming. It's very warm. People genuinely like each other, and that creates a really good environment to work in. The first time I saw you, I walked away with, he is so knowledgeable, um, he's so giving. You're always so positive. And you, you know, I was new to this, but you did not make me feel like, oh, she doesn't know anything. You know, you encouraged me. And, uh, overall, you're very passionate and very caring in everything you do. And that is, you know, within minutes of my meeting you, I walk, I had that understanding, so I hope you carry that forward in whatever you do next, and thank you again.
You're welcome. Thank you so much, all of you, really. Well, let's take our picture, and then I have a few comments, or Lisa, whatever you want to do.
Can I just make sure that if there's anybody else that wants to say anything, which I should have done, um, if anybody else wants to say anything, please feel free. And now we can take our pictures.
Okay, let's take the picture, then I have some comments, and then we have someone that's going to be joining us on July one. Wow, there you go.
We would welcome to...
All right, Mary, you set us up.
Yeah, where do you think? By the flag.
You got enough light over here?
Gosh. It's really... My hair is too short, so I always stand in the front. Yeah, yeah, okay. Very smiling, I like.
Oh, thank you too much. Well, Lisa, I think that takes us to the Superintendent's Report, right?
Yes, that concludes the President's Report. Thank you.
Okay, wow, I am sure. Really, um, really touched and really moved. I mean, thank you for Pat coming back, Anna driving over here, all the comments that, that you've, you've made, Karen sent in. I mean, it's just, uh, it's just amazing. I've really, I've really been, um, moved. You have, um, just celebrated me in ways that I would have never, ever had the audacity to expect, uh, in multiple ways with the staff and the administrative team, the Board, uh, and, uh, community members, uh, like Donna, you know, writing in, who I've known since the day, really, I met the day I walked into the district sixteen years ago, and um, this, it, it really means a lot to me, just so you know. It's really, really moving and really touching to me, so, um, thank you. So, um, we're gonna do a little bit of transition tonight, and that's what we have on the agenda, so, um, like everyone else, or Pat, I wrote my comments down so I could stay on track here tonight and I don't, um, lose it while I'm doing this. So, on Wednesday, June thirtieth, has been discussed this evening, I will have completed forty-one very special years as an educator. With that said, and as we discussed a year or so ago, I will retire as the Community High School District 128 Superintendent. It is among the highest honors of my life to have led this creative, innovative, and amazing school district. And it is simply time for the next generation of leaders, teachers, and support staff to take the district to the next level. It is also time to pursue the next journeys in my life along with my wonderful wife, Phyllis, and our very special daughter, Sue Jen and Shay Ren. Whatever that might entail and wherever that might take us, I could not have been successful without my family. My career has encompassed virtually every position at the high school level, and Lisa did a good, Lisa did an amazing job of counting those up. Uh, teacher and coach, department chair, dean, assistant principal, three high school principalships, associate superintendent, and finally superintendent at the best high school district in the country. I loved each one of those roles in each district and high school that I worked in. Absolutely wonderful collective experiences and accomplishments. I have been blessed to pursue and enjoy a career that I've always seen as a mission to assist and ensure that students were healthy and safe, and they grew and achieve, achieved at ever higher levels. And I am very proud of the collective work that we all did together to passionately bring that mission to life. I can never adequately express my appreciation to former Su- uh, D-128 Superintendent Dr. David Cluff for his wisdom that still guides me to this day, to former Board President Ann Langgraf, and other Board members including Alex Deliapoli, Pat Grudy, Jan Foreman, Ellen Maurer, Marcia Oberreiter, and Judy Sugarman, who hired me as a brand-new superintendent here twelve years ago. Over the past, um, thirteen years, over the past thirteen years, we have collectively moved D-128 from a historically outstanding, regionally recognized school district to a district that is consistently ranked among the very best districts in the nation. Those distinctions came as the result of a total focus on and commitment to ensuring that our students were healthy and well, and that all of our students grew and achieved at higher levels. The results have been extraordinary, but of course, we still have work to do. None of this happened by chance, and you and former Boards, current and former administrators, teachers, and support staff, students and parents, and community members should be lauded for your collective focus on student well-being, growth, and achievement. It continues to make the difference in District 128. Special thanks and appreciation to longtime Board President, colleague and friend, Dr. Pat Grudy, who we heard from early, for his gifted facilitation and consensus-building leadership as a Board President. The Boards during my tenure as Superintendent, including the current Board, have been outstanding. I have always respected and enjoyed the complex, deep discussions with the Board on all matters of substance, which always led to the best decision-making for students and taxpayers. We are impressively surrounded by the result of those decisions and that wise decision-making by our school Boards. There is no doubt that new Board President Lisa Hessel and our current Board members will continue its best of the best work along with new Superintendent Dr. Denise Herman, the administration, and all district stakeholders to benefit our students. And finally, thanks to the supremely committed and gifted district and building leadership teams, our teachers, and our support staff for doing what we do, how we do it, and how we continually improve it. With Bryant Kelly, Rita Fisher, Dan Stanley, Kelly Hartwig, Mary Todrick, Mick Torres, John Gilliam, and Tom Kalentus working with Denise, the district will continue to be in great hands. Their collective wisdom and processing and decision-making will ensure that District 128 continues to build on the excellence of this wonderful school district and our two amazing schools. So on that note, on behalf of the entire District 128 family, I am honored to welcome and to turn the keys over to the new Superintendent, Dr. Denise Herman, on Thursday, July one. Denise is a noted educator and has had a distinguished, distinguished career as a teacher, a building administrator, a high school principal, a district administrator, and a superintendent, and is bringing her unique abilities, skills, and experiences to lead this very special district in building upon its historic excellence in serving all students well. The district could not be in better hands, Denise. And on behalf of District 128, I want to welcome you to the best school district in the country. So why don't you come up for a minute? Let's give Denise a round of applause.
Say something, we'll certainly let her do that.
So the baton will be passed the moment that we hear Denise say, "It is what it is."
The end of the day, that will happen.
Denise, would you like to say anything to her? You certainly, um, here, you can use this microphone if you want.
Feel odd sitting here, I'm meeting early. Thank you for keeping it warm, Prentice Ann.
Good for us to get used to the idea.
Yes, yes. Well, again, I am so pleased to be here to celebrate Prentice. It was, and I, I knew how, uh, strong and amazing his leadership was the first time I talked with him during the Superintendent interview process. Um, and it's not common that the outgoing Superintendent would have the opportunity to speak with the finalist. Um, but I understood after the hour conversation that we had why this district is so special. Um, and, um, the mentorship that he has provided me since I was hired in January has been extraordinary. Um, I feel very prepared to join your team, and I'm just looking forward to getting to know all of the Board members more and just being ready to serve the whole community. So, thank you for everything, Prentice, and I appreciate everyone's support moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, let me take a deep breath. Okay, now we can go back to our business. Thank you again just for everyone, and again to the incredible leadership team that we have here. Um, Mark, I, I think I inadvertently, uh, left you off what I had actually typed, but, uh, the Board already knows.
He's hiding behind the pole.
Uh, you're, you're amazing, and we've been blessed to have you here, so thank you too, and I want to make sure that, you know, I didn't, um, inadvertently, um, do an oversight. So, um, let's move to good news, okay? Uh, so even in June, there's, uh, there are lots of things going on in a high school, uh, district or districts with high schools. So this is great news, and one the community, I'm sure, is already celebrating. Libertyville High School two thousand eighteen graduate Laura Zhang finished first in rhythmic gymnastics at yesterday's two thousand twenty-one USA Gymnastics Championships in St. Louis in final qualifying for the Tokyo Olympics. This will be, uh, Laura's second time competing in the Olympics. So, uh, those of us remember four years ago when she went as a sophomore in high school, I think.
To Rio, right?
And, uh, yes, and competed in Rio in the Olympics, so that's phenomenal. Uh, Vernon Hills High School Computer Science Teacher Adam Lukin was named the recipient of the two thousand twenty-one Regional Award for Teaching Excellence from the Computer Science Teachers Association, CSTA, and Infosys Foundation USA. As one of this year's fifteen regional winners, Lukin will receive a five hundred dollar stipend in recognition of his outstanding work, recognition on the CST web TA website, and will be recognized at a regional awards celebration. LHS students, uh, Callie Layton, uh, Ryan Magrory, Molly Mascato, and, uh, Ramenan, uh, Shirajan had work, uh, selected for the two thousand twenty-one Achievement Awards in Writing by the National Council of Teachers of English. The following D-128 students have had images selected for the two thousand twenty-one Student Perspective Gallery High School Show from VHHS Alana Krager, Kaylee Miller, and Tanya Sugar, uh, Sugarupati. Uh, LHS Campbell Clarkson. The following VHHS staff members were nominated by their colleagues for May twenty-one, uh, two thousand twenty-one You Make a Difference Awards. Uh, Corey Atwell, Andy Compton, Suzanne Curry, Stephanie Dahlstrom, Diane Dantez, Ginger Della Legarza, Vince DeLuca, Steve Downey, Doug Dustimer, Deanne Fernbach, Tammy Fisher, Denise Fuentes, Shannon Garcia, Jeanette Garlo, Alyssa Gong, Tiffany Heinlein, Heather Larson, Debbie Lehman, Bill Matha- uh, Mathiasen, uh, Wendy Meister-Loria, Jerry Messeli, uh, Julie Moore, Jeff Morello, Marla Pierce, Vicki Ream, Danielle Rodner, um, Herma Rachaudri, uh, Kajal Patel Thacker, um, Jackie Rollick, and, uh, Michelle Tran. Nominees for the honor go above and beyond for a student, a student's family, and/or a coworker for contributing positively to the school's culture and climate and for making the learning environments collaborative and caring. VHHS sophomore David Wang competed at the USA Fencing Regional Open Cir- Circuit Tournament held in Northbrook on Sunday, May twenty-third. In the Epi Juniors Under Twenty category, he earned E-two thousand twenty-one rating, which affects, uh, future tournament seeding. Congratulations. The LHS Student Newspaper DOI receives several awards in year-end contests. In the Northern Illinois Scholastic Press Association Contest, Inerd Works earned five honorable mentions and four blue ribbons, and the publications website and print magazine earned gold certificates, the contest's highest rating. In the Illinois Journalism Education Association Contest, staff members earned six first places, uh, six second places, seven third places, and nine honorable mentions in individual contests, and earned second place in the best hybrid publication and best overall publication categories as a staff. Overall, twenty students earned individual recognition in nearly all types of work done by DOI. News, feature, opinion, and sports story, photography and illustrations, layout and design, online slideshows and multimedia, and received honors. Finally, each year, the IGEA Group names an all-state journalism team. Each publication can nominate one student who submits a short portfolio of their work from the year along with some other application materials. One of this year's editors-in-chiefs, Ella Mardston, was named to this year's team. Select LHS AP Physics C students and AP Physics one and two students took the American Association of Physics Teachers Bowl Test in April. The test is a forty-question, multiple-choice exam, and the top five scores in the school comprise the team score. LHS AP Physics one and two students who competed in Division One received second place in the region. The five students who contributed to the school's score were Owen Haywood, Molly Mascato, Nathan Col... Nathan Kalunga, Nikel Patel, and Emma Mascado. Each year, the D128 Special Olympics Program presents the Jim Rogers Heart of a Champion Award to an athlete on the Storm team who most exemplifies the program and what we want the athletes to be both on and off the playing field. The award is named after longtime assistant coach Jim Rogers, who gave his heart to the program on a daily basis. This year, because all of the challenges each athlete and their families went through and all the sacrifices each athlete and their family made to make the season successful, a successful one, the award was given to all athletes in the program. The plaque is engraved with the 2020-21 recipient being the Storm. And D128 Special Olympics Head Coach Andy Compton stated, "I have never been more proud of a group than this one. They all showed the heart that our program is all about. Thank you, Storm, for an awesome year. Can't wait for next year." And finally, retired LHS Athletic Director Tim Albers was inducted into the Illinois Athletic Directors Association Hall of Fame. Albers was a member of the 2020 Class of Honorees, but due to COVID-19 restrictions prevented a 2020 induction ceremony. He was honored at the 2021 Hall of Fame banquet held last week. Albers served as the LHS Athletic Director from 1994 until his retirement in 2007. Prior to joining D21, D128, he was interim athletic director at Waukegan East High School in 1989 and 90, and athletic administrator at Niles North High School from 1990 to 94. Before becoming an administrator, Albers began his high school athletics career coaching wrestling and a few years later, football. Albers also received the IADA Outstanding Athletic Director Award in, award in 1999, the Illinois Wrestling Coaches and Officials Association Administrator of the Year Award in 1999. And he was inducted into the Lake County High School Sports Hall of Fame in 2099 and was a recipient of the Mike Rose Award from the Northern Illinois Officials Association. And I had the great pleasure of getting to know Tim well, and he was one of the great ones out there, just most deserving of that recognition. So that concludes the good news for the evening. Next on the superintendent's report tonight is COVID-19-related, our normal four or five items that we go through on this. So I do have a couple of updates here, but wanted to first just mention our metrics again here in Libertyville and Vernon Hills. Hills are very, very good, and they continue to be very good, and that's a great sign. And Bryant will continue to monitor those, share those obviously with Denise and the team, and keep the board up to speed over the summer, but we are in terrific position at this point. So that brings us to school opening, and we want to reinforce one more time, just in case somebody didn't hear us talk about this from about January on last year, or didn't get the written communication that we've shared, that our plan right now is to open school as normally as possible, given whatever the conditions are at the time that we open school. And we're well on our way to planning and making that happen. So we, the board has heard several questions or several comments tonight. They've received several emails, heard some comments last week about students wearing masks, vaccinations, and several things. So here's where we're at on timeline right now. And our response has been and will continue to be that we believe in the next probably five to 10 days, we are going to get the next round of guidance from the state. As the governor made his proclamation over the weekend to extend his emergency authorization another 30 days roughly to the end of July or pretty close to the end of July. He also pivoted back to IDPH guidance for schools. At this point, the superintendents across the state, as the board is aware, have written a letter to IDPH to encourage them to issue that guidance sooner than later. When we come back from the July 4 weekend, we're roughly four, four and a half, five weeks away from opening school. And based on what the guidance will be, there are decisions that local school districts are going to make. I also want to note that we have worked with several legislators in this area and some other legislators that we have some contacts with in different areas of Illinois. I particularly want to single out Representative Didich, who's the 59th District State Representative, which is kind of the south end of the district here down to Lincolnshire, Buffalo Grove, Wheeling, down to that area, was very responsive, you know, made some phone calls to IDPH, made some contacts down there. And again, the consistent message we're getting back is we got the guidance last year around July 4. We're probably going to get the guidance around July, you know, 4th or after July 4. So for the public, what will we do when we get that guidance? We administratively will get that guidance. The state superintendent will send it to us. We will know when it's coming out. We generally get that before it's released publicly. We'll take a look at that guidance. We'll do an assessment. We'll have a conversation about it. Denise and the team will have a conversation about it. And then communicate with the board and then make any recommendations that they might need to make from that. So, um, just to connect with some of the comments that have been made from some of the people that have suggested that we don't wear masks, why don't we just make that decision? Because we want to wait and see what the guidance is and, you know, what supports that guidance. So do we have a crystal ball? Do we know what that is? We honestly, we don't know, and I don't believe that ISPE knows at this point. Dr. Ayala is very responsive to superintendent. She was a working superintendent herself. She understands shoes that we're all walking in and the timeline we're under, and I don't believe ISPE knows at this point. Because she has clearly said that kind of the ball is in IDPH's court at this point. So, um, but there are several things that we have talked about. One is we need to know what their position is on masks and what the recommendation would be. The second one is for most schools is social distancing in the cafeteria, because right now, under the old guidance, it's still six feet. And if that's not resolved down to three feet, like as it is in restaurants and other places in the school, it's going to provide a very, very significant challenge for most schools across the state. Why is that? Well, if you recall, virtually every school in the state had some students who were full-time, some students were halftime toward the end of the year, and then some students who were still learning and remote. So we never had all the kids in the building at the same time. Since we're opening school normally, with, with very, very limited exceptions to that, we'll have mostly all of our students in the building. So if we are still at six feet, we cannot accommodate those students in our normal lunch periods during school time, which means that schools would have to commandeer, commandeer other areas of the building. And back in the spring, when we didn't have all the kids in full-time, we didn't have all the kids in halftime, we could use auxiliary space in the building. We could commandeer that space, like part of a gym, for example, without having curricular implications. Once we bring all the students back, if we take half of a gym, for example, we are impacting physical education correctly as it's being delivered. So, you know, we're hoping that that will be addressed. We'll hopefully that they will address masks that are, the mask policies in alignment with some of the other guidance that's been provided regarding masks in terms of, you know, if you're vaccinated, voluntary, can take your mask off. If you're not vaccinated, you should leave your mask on, but still voluntary. So we're going to have to see what that guidance is, but we've done everything in our power to push IDPH on this, because up here, particularly in the Chicago area, most of us start in the middle of August, like we do. So we have very limited time to make adjustments if we have to make them. So as soon as we have that, and I'm looking at the, at the camera, the streaming camera, as soon as we receive the guidance from the state, we're going to look at that immediately. Okay, Denise and the administrative team will do an assessment on that. They will do some communication with the board. So the board is brought up to speed. And if there is anything that needs to be discussed further with the board beyond a recommendation, then Denise has the opportunity to call a special meeting or depending on when that timing is. But just to review with the public again, as we went through COVID last year, the board made the decision on whether we were going to open school or not, and then when to open school. All the other recommendations fell to the superintendent and the administrative team, of course, keeping the board up to speed. So, you know, we would like to continue, and I, I think I, you know, can read the board on this, but I want to make sure that the administration still has that authorization to do what we've done before. And that is to make those decisions and keep the board, you know, keep the board up to speed. So are there any issues with that? Are there any questions? You don't need to vote on, vote on that tonight. But that, those were operating procedures, you know, through the summer into the time that we were able to bring kids back. Good? Okay. So that will give Denise the authorization to work with the leadership team. And of course, keep all of, you know, keep Lisa up to speed, keep the board up to speed. And at any point, if they think they need to talk to you, then we could just have a special meeting with a focus on that, right? Okay, we good with that? Okay. Um, uh, let's see. We did guidance recommendation by next now testing. We're still waiting to see what the guidance is going to be for the fall before, you know, we have further discussion about by next testing, but if we would somehow need to do that, or that would provide us a better opportunity to maybe look at mask policy or those things, then we'd certainly be open to do that. We mentioned COVID-19 expenditure tracking early. We're at about 1.5 million. And Mr. Stanley is, is tracking that data. We did an update on that earlier. And that's really it, unless there are other questions from the board. And again, just say, because Jane is still here and Anna didn't really comment on that specifically, but to say that we appreciate and support the public's right to form an opinion and comment and let the board know their feelings. The board will always listen to those comments. They will almost never engage in a debate or a back and forth in those comments, but certainly will factor public commentary into future discussions regarding related issues moving forward. Did I say that okay, Lisa? But we highly value the public opinion, and we will support with all of our might your right to exercise your, your First Amendment right to free speech. We will always respect that, and we would ask that you do the same, you know, in return. So. Okay, so number four is capital projects. And Mark, if you want to do the Reader's Digest version here, since we went into depth in this on, at the FNF meeting tonight.
Yes, thank you, Prentice. Our annual summer projects are underway at both high schools. At Vernon Hills, we're replacing the west parking lot, and we're doing masonry work on the east side of the building. At Libertyville, we are also doing masonry work on the front entrance east side and some north side of the building, as well as HVAC upgrades inside the building in 15 different spaces. And we're replacing the roadway coming in on the main entrance, as well as some sidewalk work around the building. Our major project is LHS Field House, which has been underway for about a month and a half now. Great progress moving forward. Equipment is, that we pre-ordered is on the way. Will be delivered here either this week or beginning of next week, as well as contractors are ready to finish tearing off the rest of the roof and getting the roof structure back in place by the end of next week.
Any questions for Mark? At this time, and we'll have a little bit further updated at another part of our the FNF agenda when we come up, report on some issues that we discovered in the Field House. Okay? Next thing on the superintendent's report is 2021, 2022 IASB Annual Membership Dues. This district, to my knowledge, has always been a member of the Illinois Association of School Boards. I believe we get great benefit from that membership. Jim is our most active member in that group, and would encourage any of the new board members to join in with him, but our association with the Association of School Boards is very important. So the administration would recommend that we authorize payment of the FY22 Annual Membership Dues. So we would need.
Make a motion?
Yes, we would need a motion and a second.
I move to approve the IASB Annual Membership Dues.
Second. Thank you.
And then for discussion, I was there today. You, once you get your membership, you'll be able to go and log in and get training. There's seminars. I used Press today just to look at a policy thing to see if there was a word issue. So it's just one of those things that you'll start using.
Well said, and I continue to take advantage of some of the online workshops that are included with our membership that have been very helpful. Any other comments about our ISB membership?
Might be useful for the public to know what the amount is for the dues.
Carol, what do we have for a moment?
$10,415.
$10,415.
Good question. I didn't, I didn't see it either. Yeah.
Okay.
Great. So if we could have a roll call, please, if there's no further comment?
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Lee.
Okay, thank you. Next on the superintendent's agenda, again, 2021, 2022 EdRed. Membership fee and EdRed is one of our primary advocacy groups for public school districts in suburban Chicago area. Our district has been, again, a longtime member. I've worked with EdRed leadership for years on legislation, to write legislation, to testify on legislation, and they advocate for us in Springfield. So it's a coalition of mainly Chicago suburban districts. They do a terrific job, and they also do a terrific job of partnering with the other advocacy groups for education, and they work well. So, you know, we would recommend that we continue our membership in EdRed for FY22.
Can I have a motion, please?
I motion to approve our membership dues for EdRed for 21, 22 school year in the amount of $5,000.
Thank you.
Second.
Great, we have a second. For comment, I will also add that I rely on that EdRed weekly update
Yes.
to see what's going on in Springfield on a regular basis. I find it very helpful. And I think our membership there is also money well spent. Any further comment? Great, then roll call, please.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And next on the superintendent's report is the semi-annual review of closed session meeting minutes. Were required by law to two times a year, review closed session minutes, and whether we destroy those or release those. So we have reviewed the closed session minutes and we recommend that, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong thing. We recommend with the semi-annual review that we don't release any of the closed minutes.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Lee. Can I have a motion? So the motion would be to approve the administration's recommendation that the closed session meeting minutes remain closed.
Yeah, that we don't, we do not release any of the closed session meeting minutes.
Okay, so.
I will make a motion that we approve that the closed session meeting minutes remained closed and not be released.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. Back to you, Dr. Lee, for FOIA.
Okay, thank you. And we have to, believe it or not, to finish the superintendent's report tonight, we have five FOIA requests. By law, we're required to read those into the record at every board meeting. So the first FOIA request was received on 5/17/21. The response deadline was 5/24/21. Requester was Jairo Gomez from Requester was Jairo Gomez from the Chicagoland Laborers District Council. Information requested, copy of the bid results as read from the bid opening on 5/13/2021 at 10:00 AM for the Libertyville High School Courtyard Classroom Project. Follow-up was done by Carol Scodin. The request was fulfilled and the response was sent on 5/20/21. Second FOIA request, received on 5/19/2021, response deadline 5/26/21. Requester Matthew McNeil, IBEW. Information requested, copy of the contract with Omni Group for the LHS Summer 2021 HVAC Upgrades Project. Please also list us, um, include a list of subcontractors that will be performing the work. Follow-up was done by Mark Koopman and Carol Scodin. Request fulfilled and response was sent on 5/26/21. Uh, third, commercial FOIA request, uh, received on 5/20/21. Response deadline 6/21/21. Requester Preston Detti from ChicagolandConstruction.com. Information requested, bid results, tabulations, or awards, uh, for 5/6/2021 Community High School District Number 128 Fence Replacement and Traffic Barrier Gate Projects at Libertyville High School Campus in Lake County. Carol Scodin responded on 5/20/21 with the location of responced, responsive records on D128 website. Uh, number four, commercial, uh, FOIA request received 6/221, response deadline 7/121. Requester Preston Detti, ChicagolandConstruction.com. Um, information requested, bid tabulations, uh, results or award for 5/13/2021 Community High School District Number 128 Courtyard Classroom Project at Libertyville High School Campus in Lake County. Carol Scodin responded on 6/7/21 with location of responsive records, again, on the D128 website. And the final request, uh, was received on 6/15/21, response deadline 6/22/21. Requester Jennifer McDonald, the plumber's local 130. Information requested, any and all certified payroll records for American Backflow and Fire Prevention Incorporated for 2018, 19, 20, and 21. Any and all awarded contracts for American Backflow and Fire Prevention for 2018, 19, 20, and 21. Any and all invoices for American Backflow and Fire Prevention Incorporated for 2018, 19, 20, and 21. Any and all test reports from American Backflow and provide, and Fire Prevention Incorporated for backflow and fire sprinkler testing and repair for the years 2018, 19, 20, and 21. The follow-up, Mark Koopman, Carol Scodin. Request was fulfilled and response was sent on 6/22/21. And Lisa, believe it or not, that concludes the superintendent's very short report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Lee, and thank you, Carol. It sounds like most of those FOIAs all fell on you. Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you, everybody. Um, so we will move on to our consent vote agenda. These items were all discussed at length in committee. So if I could please have a motion to approve the consent vote agenda?
Move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Great. Roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. Moving on to Program and Personnel Committee. Uh, our chair, uh, Jim Batson is not in attendance, so I will take it from him just for the evening. Um, first is a memorandum of agreement that was amended for the work year. Brian?
So, uh, thanks, Lisa, for the memorandum of agreement with the Board of Education and the Teachers Union, um, that was agreed upon, um, earlier in the school year to add additional five days, uh, to the school calendar for professional learning. Um, that was, um, ratified by both the board and the Teachers Union. Um, and then the teachers would be, um, compensated pro, um, rate at their daily rate. When we went to go, um, you know, pay this amount towards the springtime, we were working with the teachers' retirement systems and with our school district attorney on, um, paying those teachers that are in the retirement track. Um, and teachers, once they're on the retirement track, cannot get paid a certain percentage higher than the previous year. Um, and even if you added days on to the calendar, um, we unfortunately, we looked at all avenues. Again, we worked with TRS. Um, we worked with our school district attorney to try to see about paying those teachers in the retirement track for those five additional days. Um, unfortunately, because of the limitations, we were not able to compensate them fully for those five days. Um, or receive any, uh, benefits for those five days post-retirement or anything. So we, um, came to an agreement with the Teachers Union to, uh, give those teachers in the retirement track that are retiring in FY22, so the end of next school year, or the end of the 2023 school year, five vacation days that they can use over the next two years. If they don't use them, uh, those vacation days will not go with them. They will, they cannot be compensated, turn in for compensation or anything. Um, and so they have two years to use those five days. Um, so that was what we worked out with the, um, you know, Teachers Union, um, as we talked about in committee. And then also along with that, our department supervisors that were in the, um, they're not part of the Teachers Union. Um, but we do have some department supervisors that are return, uh, retiring in the next couple of years. They will also, um, my recommendation is to give them five vacation days again to utilize over a two-year period. They cannot be carried over into retirement. They will not get any compensation for those days. Again, they can use them or, um, they, they will go away.
Great, thank you. Seems like a fair solution.
Yeah, so this is the district paying them back for work they've already done.
Correct. Yes.
Great. Um, can I have a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement amended for the work year?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to 4B Educational Support Staff Staffing Recommendations. Think that, back to you, Brian.
Thank you. Um, so as part of our staffing that we do, um, annually, we do certified teachers. Um, when we do our sectioning for classes, we go through and do staffing for our teachers in March and make recommendations, um, to the Board of Education at March. Um, in the last few years, we've also made recommendations for educational support staff in June. Um, or I'm sorry, in May, however, this year, due to some changes that happened last year, um, with being a remote school year, a hybrid school year, and a partial in-person school year. There were some changes in our educational support staff that some of our, uh, ESP, commonly referred to, were furloughed during that time at the beginning of the year. Um, those that were able to come back, um, all were, all did come back. They may not have come back in their original roles. Um, some of our ESP, um, moved into special services, teaching aid positions and other positions. Um, and now being back full in person for next year, we do need to make sure that we have monitor, security, uh, resource aid, uh, positions for basically having all of our students 100% back into the buildings. So in doing that, we did an extensive review of all the positions. We looked at, um, um, you know, the job responsibilities of the positions, made some adjustments to those positions, but our overall difference of, um, educational support staff for next year being, uh, net zero. So, um, but we were able, I think, to use, um, some of our positions, uh, much more to the benefit of our students. For example, uh, you know, what came up in committee was, uh, we will have two physical welfare, um, teaching aides with lifeguard certification in both of our buildings, um, for our, uh, all of our classes that utilize all of the gym spaces, uh, you know, each day in the pool. Um, along with that, we also tried to do, um, every few years, recommendations on our starting rates, benefits. We do comparisons with other schools, and so our recommendation is to, um, increase some of our starting hourly rates. Also add a 1% longevity stipend for our educational support staff at 20 years. Currently, we have eight years, 12, and 16. But we do have a lot of staff that stay with us, are loyal to us. Um, and so we like to make that recommendation. And also, our longevity retirement bonus payment, payments for support staff to, um, change the minimum rate. They're paid on a percentage rate of their salary, but, uh, change our minimum rate, uh, increase it, um, because the numbers in there just don't make much sense anymore. So due to changes in, um, salaries over the years.
Hi, great. And, uh, as mentioned, we did discuss that, um, also at length during committee. And, uh, we're appreciative of your efforts to make sure that our, um, compensation for our very important support staff is competitive. Uh, with that being said, um, looking for a motion to approve the educational support staff staffing recommendations?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add, I think in the committee, is that, uh, I think Brian also looked at the roles and the, the work that they're doing and, you know, repurposed or changed some of the responsibilities to optimize. So I wanted to, I should have bring that up.
Yeah. I would agree. That's an important point, and we, we appreciate his efforts, uh, and the whole team's efforts to pay attention to that. I know that there are committees at both schools that look at that, and we appreciate those efforts. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Yeah, motion passes. I'm not aware of any other for the PNP. So that will conclude this, the portion, the PNP committee portion of the agenda. Over to you, Casey.
Thank you, President Hessel.
You're welcome, Chairwoman Rooney. What do you like better, chairperson or chairwoman, or just chair?
I answer to either.
All the, all of them?
Or just Casey, right?
Just Casey's fine. All right, we're starting with the, uh, resolution to transfer interest from the Debt Service Fund to the Education Fund. And we discussed this in committee, but, um, schools do not operate like your own personal checkbook does, where you can transfer funds from your, uh, you know, your checking account to your savings account. Uh, we have to go through the process of, uh, approving a resolution so that we can access and utilize that interest in the fund. So, any comments, any? I know what, like I said, we discussed this. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution authorizing and directing the transfer of interest from the Debt Service Fund to the Education Fund in the amount of $41,949.97 plus June's interest, which has yet to be determined?
So moved.
Second.
You, Carol?
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Next motion is a resolution calling for a public hearing on our 21, 22 budget. This is a process that we go through every year. Um, we are required and welcome that the public, uh, attends a public hearing on our budget so that they have the opportunity to ask questions and learn about what's going on, um.
And that they also have the ability to inspect the budget at the district office.
Yep. Any other comments? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution calling for a public hearing on the 2021, 2022 budget, um, set for Monday, July 26th at 6:30 PM? So moved.
Second.
Motion passes. Carol?
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. All right, the next, uh, resolution is to approve the emergency contract for Libertyville High School Fieldhouse Masonry Wall Replacement. Mark, you want to give us a whole background on that?
Uh, sure.
I know we discussed it in committee, but.
Thank you, Cassie. We, we discussed it in committee. Um, upon, uh, demolition, it was, uh, completion of demolition, a siding on the west wall, it was discovered that, uh, the masonry wall that was built several years in the past to accommodate classrooms was unstable. So we stabilized the wall. The engineer, our district engineer, um, and our architect, uh, as well as Gil Bain and, and the district, uh, staff inspected the wall. And it's recommended that the wall be removed and a, a new complete sheer wall be installed in place of that to stabilize the west end of the building. Um, the, the resolution is, uh, uh, the contract cost of masonry shall not exceed $60,000.
All right, any comments? You know, we discussed this at length with some concerns, uh, that we had had. And we have some assurances that all the other structures within the field house.
Are, are being thoroughly inspected, correct.
Inspected and stable. Okay.
And it was also noted, if I could add, that the only reason the wall was unstable is because of the demolition.
Right.
When the roof was removed, that's when the instability occurred. So at no time when it was occupied by students was that wall unstable. And I think that was an excellent point that my colleagues made that is worth noting.
Excellent. Yes.
And further, it's an emergency authorization because there would be no reason to assume that it would, that work would need to be done when the bid was made on this project.
Right.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Excellent points. Can I get a motion to approve the resolution approving emergency contracts for Libertyville High School Fieldhouse Masonry Wall Replacement not to exceed $60,000?
So moved.
Second.
Carol, roll call?
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to the Miller Cooper and Company 2021 Audit Engagement. Prentice, you had some.
This is, sure, this is, um, the district contracts with an external auditing firm to audit, uh, our finances and our financial practices, uh, every year. Um, we have worked with, uh, this particular firm for a number of years. Uh, they've become very familiar with, uh, our procedures and our protocol. Um, in the district, Miller Cooper and Company. So, um, Dan, uh, we have a Dan who, uh, was not able to be here tonight, and the administration, uh, we would recommend that, um, we approve the contract with, or to retain Miller Cooper and Company Limited for our 2021 audit. I think Don, um, I think we also noted that, uh, cost-wise, uh, Dan did some checking and, you know, Miller Cooper's is kind of in the middle on cost, and we get maximum bang for our buck, uh, with them because of their knowledge of the district. So, we would recommend that we approve the agreement.
Can I get a motion to approve the Miller Cooper and Company Audit Engagement Contract for 2021?
So moved. I just wanted to add one more note, I think, that we discussed, which is if you even were to get a lower-cost provider, the amount of money and time you would spend to bring them up to the same level of knowledge would, would not make it worthwhile. Sorry.
That's okay. I'm usually comment after the second. Do you want a second?
Second, yes.
Great, perfect.
Okay, to what I said before.
Perfect.
On the record.
Small point of order. Thank you. Excellent point.
That's a good point. Uh, okay, roll call, Carol.
Hessel.
Aye.
Kulkarni.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Passes. Moving on to school treasurer appointment.
Well, I know this is going to shock you, but, uh, Phil's, uh, Facilities and Finance Committee recommends, um, continuing to retain Dan Stanley as the, um, school district treasurer.
Okay. Any comments? Other than a big yes?
We think we'll keep him, right?
Okay, and I'm going to read the official language that Carol gave me. Can I get a motion to reaffirm the appointment of Assistant Superintendent for Finance, Dan Stanley, to serve as treasurer at the board's pleasure?
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, Carol?
Cool. Carney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. And next item is the school treasurer's bond approval.
Is there a chance that Dan is streaming this live right now?
He's watching.
I hope not. I hope he's just listening.
He's watching.
Dan, congratulations, buddy. Glad to have you back for another year.
Whether you want to be or not, you're the school treasurer, right?
No, turn it off and go to sleep.
Okay, so, uh, the next piece of this is since we have, uh, appointed Dan the treasurer of the district, we actually have to bond him, uh, through, uh, insurance. So, uh, Facilities and Finance Committee recommends, um, approval of the school treasurer's bond for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two.
All right. I get a motion to approve the school treasurer's bond, uh, in the amount of, I think it was eighteen, eighteen thousand.
So moved.
Second.
All right, roll call, Carol?
Rooney.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cool. Carney.
Hi.
Passes. Moving on to postage machine contract lease for our district office.
Well, uh, we have postage machines at, uh, uh, district office in the two, uh, buildings, and, uh, they are off-lease, so they are beyond kind of the normal five-year lease. Uh, we need to replace that equipment. Dan is, um, shared with F and F, uh, through us that, uh, he is recommending that we lease, uh, those machines on a five-year lease. Uh, we did have a conversation about service and maintenance there, which is usually included, um, with the lease. Uh, and then we'll continue to monitor, um, you know, the need or the requirement to have, you know, postage machines in the district as we continue. Uh, the committee also had, um, you know, fairly extensive discussion on the district's efforts over the last few years to really consciously reduce the number of mail, but there are still mailings that we are required to do legally, uh, and practically speaking. So we recommend, uh, the, the leases on the, the five-year leases on the equipment.
Right.
At District Office, LHS and VHS.
Any comments or questions? All right. Can I get a motion to approve the postage machine contract lease in, uh, five-year lease in the amount of thirty-six thousand, thirty-seven dollars and eighty cents?
So moved.
Second.
Carol, roll call?
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cool. Carney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Motion passes. All right, uh, then we're on to the bid recommendation for Vernon Hills High School lighting replacement. Mark, and I'm going to ask you to walk us through the financial savings associated with this because even though it's very detailed, I think it's important for the public to hear it.
Okay, um, so background, uh, on the project, uh, we're looking at upgrading our lighting, uh, from, uh, our T-eight bulbs that we are presently using, uh, to LED fixtures, um, throughout the building. We, um, went out for bid. We had eleven contractors show up for a pre-bid meeting. We received six bids, uh, for the project. So, um, based on, um, information, uh, that we shared, uh, with our consultants, uh, the classrooms are used, uh, eight hours a day for a hundred and ninety days. Our corridors, the lights are on for fifteen hours a day for two hundred and twenty-five, uh, days. Our gyms are used fourteen hours a day for a hundred and ninety days, and additional twelve hours a day for eighty days on weekends. Um, we calculated out what our, our savings would be, um, across the board. My sheets are mixed up here. I apologize for that. Um, on our normal usage for our, uh, our classrooms, uh, with our present fixtures, we're using about two hundred and, um, fifty-four thousand, uh, BT, uh, uh, kilowatt-hours. Um, uh, with the LED upgrades, we would, uh, be using sixty-six thousand, about sixty-seven thousand, and we're saving about a hundred and, uh, eighty-eight thousand kilowatt-hours, just in our classrooms of our own. Our corridors are very high usage because of the amount of days and the amount of hours. Presently, about three hundred and seven thousand kilowatt-hours. Uh, we'll drop that down to fifty-four thousand kilowatt-hours, saving about two hundred and fifty-three thousand kilowatt-hours. Our gyms will drop dramatically, about seventy thousand kilowatt-hours. We're looking at, um, uh, total savings of almost, oh, apologize again. I believe we're about six hundred thousand. Uh, kilowatt-hours, uh, of savings. Um, we're looking at savings per year of about forty-six thousand dollars. We also have applied for COMED for, uh, grant money, and our estimated, uh, uh, rebate from COMED is about a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars for the project.
Fantastic.
Okay, so we're looking for, um, the board to approve the bid from Kerry Electric Incorporated for their base bid, as well as five alternates for a total amount of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars.
Thank you for doing the work on this, Mark. This is, uh.
You're welcome. Sorry for getting my papers mixed up.
That's quite all right. Well, then smarter people than me have done the math on this, and it's something that's, uh, a significant cost savings to the district. It's a project that will eventually pay for itself in a rather rapid fashion. Any other comments or questions? I think it's important to note that it's not just the replace, I mean, I, because we talked about it in committee, it's not just the replacement of the bulbs, we're replacing the system.
The entire fixture.
Automatic, and we're going to be reducing, you know, right now, light switches are flipped by a switch as opposed to the automatic motion sensor. So that's a part of the bid, which will significantly reduce the heat.
Yes, with the occupancy sensors, yes.
And I wanted to add that the, the lights itself last seven, seven and a half times longer, so need to be replaced less often.
Yeah, so that'll be continued to deliver some cost savings. Thank you, Sol. That's a good point. All right, any other comments? Can I get a motion to approve the bid for the Vernon Hills High School lighting replacement in the amount of seven hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars, which includes a sixty thousand dollar?
Contingency.
Contingency.
So moved. Second.
Roll call?
Carmichael.
Hi.
Drumkey.
Hi.
Hessel.
Hi.
Cool. Carney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
All right, motion passes. I do not have anything else for other anyone. Oh, then this concludes, uh, Facilities and Finance part.
Okay, thank you. Um, number six, Illinois Association of School Boards, um, Jim is not here, so we will get an update from our fearless ISB representative, um, next month, um, at the July meeting.
Although, Carol, you did send out the, I noticed that, um, the conference is coming up, and we should probably, they, they haven't released what the schedule is, but the pre-conference, uh, sessions have been, uh, published, so can look over those and see, because there's a couple, I think, that we would be interested in going to see. Um, but how do we move forward on that? Like, what do we do now? Do we just wait?
Just, um, let me know if you want to attend. I mean, there's a Google Calendar, I sent.
Right.
You know, you want to attend, it's in the hotel, I'll take care of all registration and accommodations.
Okay, and for the new members, I strongly recommend it. Fun-filled sessions all day.
And the company's pretty good from the district here. I, I can tell you after having done a number of those. It's, it's pretty nice to be able to, uh, spend a little quality time with your, your, um, board colleagues as well as, as, um, some of the district administrators. It's a, it's a great, it's a great way to get to know each other.
Good points. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, to CEDOL. Any update, Kara?
Uh, so we had our, uh, quarterly meeting on Wednesday, June second, which I was able to attend up in Gages Lake. Um, and there were, you know, the typical, typical things that happen on a yearly basis, uh, the executive board member appointments, um, delegation of board authorities, appointment of a new treasurer, and then establishing the meeting dates for the calendar year. Um, but the main order of business was the presentation of the tentative budget. Um, some notable things, there was a, uh, there's going to be a three percent increase in tuition rates, uh, kind of across the board within our CEDOL co-op. Um, I think this is just kind of the yearly growth that happens within the co-op. Uh, and then some other main points, there's going to be a decrease in enrollment and staffing. So I know that sounds odd to have an increase in tuition while having this other decrease, but, um, the decrease in enrollment is due to kind of the natural ebb and flow of students who are, um, for lack of better words, assigned out to CEDOL schools. Um, but also in addition, there is a good deal of takeback that's happening within the co-op, which is something to be celebrated, um, both within our district and within CEDOL as a whole. It's, it's not a loss necessarily. It just means that, uh, a lot of the services that we utilize CEDOL for are now being taken back in-house. For instance, our transition program that's coming back to our district is a good example of this. And then, um, other than that, just some improvements, some capital projects made to some of the, uh, buildings. So, uh, a playground, a fully accessible playground at Fairhaven School. Um, there's going to be, uh, at the South School, a new gym floor installed and new floors installed at Sid Lash Academy. So we do have a good number of students who attend these schools and who will be able to enjoy these, uh, enjoy these new capital improvements, and I believe that was the bulk of it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Okay, so we are going to, um, go into executive session for the purpose of the semi-annual.
No, we don't have to because.
Cause we already.
Cause you guys voted, you voted on my recommendation not to release any.
Ah, I see. That did seem a little redundant. Thank you. Okay. Um, then we are ready to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
We got it.
Hi. Hessel.
Hi.
Cool. Carney.
Hi.
Rooney.
Hi.
Benjamin.
Hi.
Carmichael.
Hi.
We'll see everybody back here on July twenty-sixth at five-thirty.
Um, compliments to the board, um.